So I'm just gonna firstly share why I decided to jump on Facebook on Sunday at 5 o'clock. I was just hit with such a wave of grief and disappointment that I felt we needed the opportunity. There's so many different elements of the music community in Melbourne, but we all live in our own little silos. You know, there's really not much, not much collaboration going on between organisations in the community sector or in the education sector. And I just wanted an opportunity for us to all come together to collectively take a big, deep breath and to grieve for the year of music making that we had all planned to give to our communities that is no longer possible. So just to acknowledge that for all of us, that there's a great degree of grief, professional grief and trauma for all of us going on right now, and we're all experiencing that in different ways. So I wanted us just to be together in this moment to share that and to reach out, all of us, to say if anybody needs any help, please, please reach out and let me know and I can give you whatever resources I have or share with you some places that have professional support. So we're all in this together firstly. And secondly, I thought we needed a chance to come, really, I wanted a chance to hear from you and to share with you how we're going to reimagine our purpose, our strategy and our process going forward. Because we're not going to return to the way we were doing things before, it's just not going to be possible. And plus, that would be a wasted opportunity to rethink what we're doing to make it even better. So a chance to come together and share some of those ideas as well. So I'm just gonna do a quick, I've done a little presentation, it'll just take two minutes. Just gonna share my screen with you. Yeah. Can I get a thumbs up if you can see my lovely slide? Excellent. So welcome to the Melbourne Classical Musicians Town Hall Meeting. I'm just trying to get my mouse back everybody, sorry. I'm looking so professional right now. Noodles says, "Welcome to the Town Hall Meeting." Noodles was very popular. Noodles got 2,000 views in the video, so we thought Noodles would say hi firstly. We needed a little bit of silliness. Ingrid and I are going to be your facilitators this evening, so that's who we are. She's behind me, as you can see, and I'm here. And you can find, here is our schedule. We're gonna do a poll in a moment, then we're going to hear from Ben Opie, wonderful Ben Opie, Melissa Doakie is also with us, and Brienne Gola. An unexpected delight for you, the magnificent Sarah Coro is going to play us out at 9:20 this evening. She's gonna play live for us, thank you Sarah, and then we finish right on 9:30. So that's our schedule. Noodles rules. These are the ye and nays, okay. Make contributions, we're not here to complain. We're here to take responsibility for ourselves and our organisation, not to lay blame for our circumstances on anybody else. We're here to be solution oriented, not problem oriented together. We're here to ask relevant questions that can benefit many, not things that are very, very, very specific to you and your organisation. And we also want to speak briefly instead of hogging the limelight. So they're Noodles rules. And seriously people, zero complaints about funding, zero complaints about the government. That's not what we're here to do, we're here to share solutions. So how to contribute? I'm gonna share in the chat with you this document, which is open access. And I'd like you to put your topic of your question that it relates to, your name, so we know who the originator of the question is, what is the question, rather than maybe statements or opinions, what is the question so that we can help you get to a solution? And then if you, if there's a question in there that you've come across great resources or you've got some ideas for that we don't get a chance to get to, you can pop that in the solutions and resources as well. So we're gonna end up with this great document of collective ideas and innovations for ways to move forward. So I will put that link for you in the chat box in a second. And I'd love to start us with a bit of a poll. Because there's so much. Okay, great, seeing those questions coming through there. Results for the poll. Can you see them everybody? I'm just checking, can you see this poll? Yes, great, excellent. Just while you're doing that, I'm just getting this other document up to share, to put it in the chat for you. There we go, that's the document to add your "no" to pineapple, says Sarah Coro. Sarah Coro, spoken like a true Queenslander. Great, we'll just take another 30 seconds or so and get a few of those more responses into the poll. 63% of you say yes to pineapple and pizza, 38 say no. Great, and we've got lots of, lots of professional players and singers in the room, probably 50 half of you. And then, pretty evenly split actually, I'm just gonna end this poll now so we can see the results. There we go, hopefully, can you see those results now? Great. Excellent, so lots of questions about how to use the digital space to build community for my organisation and how to keep my community connected, excellent, and how is our model gonna work if we don't play concerts? Fantastic, and a 60/40 split on the pizza. Great, so I really wanted to start with some great inspiration for us of an organisation, of a Melbourne-based music organisation who are doing really fantastic work to build a community, to serve their community through music, who've thought about what the resources of their people could be beyond playing a concert. Because that's just not possible now anyway, so how do we serve our community through music in lots of ways? There is self-managed ensemble and above all, as we all aim to be there artistically excellent and taking risks. So I'm really delighted that we have Melissa Doakie and Ben Opie from Inventi Ensemble. Ben, we'd love to hear from you about what Inventi's doing to inspire us.
Thanks. And then thanks for all going to be able to share a little bit with everyone of what's been going on and again to ask those questions that you've been talking about. So for those of you who don't know, Inventi Ensemble, we're based in Melbourne and we're a mixed chamber music ensemble. Generally, we have five people as our core ensemble and our passion is for creating new works, commissioning new works. We've somehow become quite renowned for reducing large-scale works down for this small chamber ensemble. So we did the Planets for five players last year. And I think it's this kind of innovation that we got drawn into that meant that when this challenge came along, there were, we were discussing it today and I think there were three main points that we wanted to focus on once we were presented with this challenge. And the first one was optimism, and it is a challenge sometimes to be optimistic, but that's something that with such a good support group around us, with such a good team of people and being able to reach out to other colleagues, it's meant that we can be optimistic in this time and share ideas and share what is challenging about the time so that we can move forward and so that we can start to think about innovative ways to present things. Within that, we were really committed to maintaining quality. So I think for all of us, there was a bit of desperation at one point to just put something out there because that's what needed to get out, and that wasn't necessarily a bad thing. But we were just really committed and I think, I think everyone here is committed to maintaining equality in. And the third one was just communication. I personally felt like right at the beginning, there was a bit of a lack of communication from various points in the industry. And again, you know, I don't think anyone is to blame for that, no one really knew what to do, no one had information. But it was something that we thought, maybe we can just open the lines of communication to other colleagues, to the people who play in our ensemble and to the composers that we work with as well, just to check in, we've maintained as well throughout this entire, what's it been, four months or, you know, or more even, to just be able to feel like people can get in touch with each other. I think that's been a very important part of what we've been doing. So in, in that time, we just started thinking, how can we not let people say no? That seems like a bit of a strange thing, but there were so many times when people would approach us and say, "Your event has been postponed, your event has been cancelled." And there have been a few people as well who ended up saying, "What can we do?", which is, which is the way that we approach things as well, how is the question we kept on asking ourselves? We wanted to make sure that any engagement that we have, at least the conversation was had, of how can we present this in a different way while still maintaining quality? And also, also maintaining, you know, it's not always possible, absolutely not always possible, but live music is so special and live engagement and communication as part of a concert experience is so special. Right now, it's not possible to do it the way that we all are so familiar with. But in some of the, so some of the projects that we've developed in this time, we've managed to livestream concerts into aged care facilities. And as part of that, there've been, you know, five different households. So sometimes when people are lucky enough to live with another musician, we can have duets or even trios sometimes that stream into, and we stream these sets, short sets of music into aged care facilities and are able to actually communicate with residents there and, you know, ask them how their day is going, talk to them about what the weather's like where we are or maintaining that essential part of the concert experience, which I think is communication and engagement. So that's been something that has been really important. I think we've done about half a dozen of those aged care livestreams and are continuing to do those into the future. Commissioning, as I said before, we've been very passionate about that. And one of the things we were desperate for when it all happened was to make sure that things were still being created. And whether that meant challenging composers to write for solo instruments or to write for the future when we might be able to gather again, it was still just asking composers to rise to the challenge, I think, of writing, writing music, expressing themselves. Because this is such an important part of our history that should be remembered and should be documented in this incredible art that we have in music making. We also have managed to do some interactive kids' shows, which are absolutely hilarious and so much fun. Where there's craft elements and I ended up playing some Peter and the Wolf through this paper plate duck mask, which I think I broke several reeds in my attempt to make that work in the first place. We ended up recording two albums while we were in between the two lockdowns. So, I mean, actually, I do want to make a point as well, we, a big priority in this time as well has been just responsibility. And, you know, the temptation, I think for us was to, you know, you want to do as much as possible. And when we made the decision to record these two new albums, one of beautiful works by Melody Otbusch and Kyle Martin, Melbourne-based composers, it was just important to us that we do maintain responsibility and safety just out of respect for the other musicians and making sure that everything was sanitised. It's, it's, it's an extra thing that we have to think about, but it's certainly part of, I think, the discussion that all of us have to have at the moment for any project that we're doing. And so, you know, that means a whole lot of extra work, a whole lot of preparation, a whole lot of Melissa and I going into venues and scrubbing down seats and stands and door handles with sanitised wipes. But it's, it's worth it and it's, and like I say, I think that it's accepting that, that responsibility to be responsible in this time is an important part of where we're at now. And then the last thing is these broadcasts. So we've managed to have three broadcasts in the last few months. And as part of that, it's been important for us to make sure that the discussion is constantly had with whoever is presenting the broadcast, that there are finances involved, that there's remuneration involved. And whether that comes from the venue itself or whether it comes from Inventi, it's just been an important thing to maintain the value of our craft and the value of our art. It's really hard, I think, and sometimes, yeah, sometimes it's a bit, something that gets under my skin a little bit, but it's an important conversation to have. It's kind of easy to maybe not have that conversation sometimes, but it's a little bit too important because, again, looking into the future, I feel like it's something that we need to maintain and a difficult conversation that continues to, that we, that we need to continue to have. So that's a bit of a summary of what we've been doing over the last few months. And just looking into the future, it's continuing in that way and continuing to constantly ask, how can we? And then on top of that, be adaptable and be flexible. We've had ongoing conversations with venues and constantly supporting each other, like both through the venues and within our ensemble and within the community. To, of course, sometimes further cancellation's gonna happen and, of course, it will be disappointing at the time. But what we've been trying to do for each other and I think what hopefully we can share with each other here and into the coming weeks and months is an ongoing support for the fact that we can be adaptable, absolutely. And we can share our strength with each other to make sure that we can really get through this and thrive. I think that's where we've been, that's what we've been trying to share with each other.
Thank you Ben so much. And I, so many of the conversations I've been having with people, particularly in the last, on the tail end of the first lockdown and in the last couple of days have been around, what can we control? And we control the way that we are being, like we can't control, there's so much that's out of our control, but we can be, as you've indicated, flexible, adaptable, positive. So I think maybe ensuring that we're not losing sight of, we can choose to, excuse the pun, conduct ourselves with grace and from a sense of abundance and care for others through music. Melissa, was there anything that you wanted to add while, while we've got you on the call as well?
Yeah, thank you. I mean, Ben said mostly everything, just to, just to add that. I think we can all be hopeful in this situation, that there are ways still, if we, if we are creative, to think about how we can make our art and how we can get it out there. And I think in our conversations that we've had, our players have really appreciated having the work, not only from the financial aspect of it, but from the artistic aspect, just to be able to do something and, and create. So that's been really positive to be able to offer that work. And we've had really positive conversations with venues as well about either adapting our current programmes or going to the future. So, and that's from a scheduling perspective and also financial. Like Ben said, I think it's worth having those conversations about money as well. And we've had really positive responses from, from venues in that respect. So it's encouraging, I feel, in spite of everything that's going on, there's, there is hope out there.
Thanks Melissa. Just, I think Ben has to leave us for another engagement. So just before we potentially lose Ben, if anyone's got a question, can you just, I can't see you all on the one screen, so can you just type your name in the chat box if you wanted to ask Ben or Melissa a question? No, we're all good, excellent. Thank you. Can we have a, you know, round of, oh, David had a question, sorry David.
I'm so sorry, I'm so sorry, I'm slow, because I'm using like three different screens here. Ben and Melissa, it's so wonderful to see you, Tena Koutour from New Zealand. I'm just so inspired to hear what you've done Ben, it really, to be honest with you, we've done our lockdown already, but we are all very nervous and anxious about the second wave and everything like that. And can I just ask maybe please about the financial side of things? Because I was put under a lot of pressure initially here to put content out and I didn't feel, I guess I struggled, like maybe you alluded to, the fact that colleagues of mine were chucking out digital content and actually it was somewhat cheapening what I do and what some of my peers do. And I wondered how you responded to that when people asked you for things, what was good vocabulary around your responses?
Yeah, it's a good question and, I mean, really the honesty has just been the best solution for that for us. But there've been moments where we've had to turn down opportunities in the face of not, not getting financial gain. And so I guess that, that has been the compromise that we've had to make. But in every situation, I think we've just expressly said that we don't want to devalue what we've created. And regardless of whether that's pre, you know, pre-recorded online stuff that we've had in our archives for some time, we just had to be quite steadfast in our resolve to say, we can't devalue the work that went into that and the crafting that went into that. And then from there going to, just again, an honest conversation about, I guess, remuneration. You know, what, what is it worth, what is a broadcasting fee worth? And there are guidelines, there are some guidelines and it's scary, there's a scary document floating around out there about all of the different tiers of broadcasting that's out there. And in the end, after having that initial discussion about remuneration, Melissa and I will, and Brienne will often sit down and just ask ourselves, what would we personally feel comfortable with? And then we go back to the venue and so far it's just been a nice, honest conversation about, and it hasn't been, yeah, I mean, I think the thing that one might be a little bit worried about is the, the response from the other side, but so far it's just been, it's always been quite a respectful conversation around the finances. So it's been perhaps a little bit different for various venues or various engagements that we've had. But I would encourage and just an honesty around it.
Thank you Ben, because I work with, obviously I'm also responsible for educating young people and I, and I, and I struggle vocabulary to give to them, so that's wonderful, a wonderful resource, thank you.
Ingrid and I talk, have been talking a lot about this issue of free content online and the damage that it's done to everybody, because the majors are now not going to be able to monetise that because it's a saturated market. What they haven't realised is the bulk of our industry who are freelancers, who only get paid when we work, they've damaged us by putting all that on content, putting all that content online for free. Ingrid, do you want to jump in on this, this issue of things being free, particularly in this online space?
Yeah, I think the thing to, the question that we have to come back to is, who are we for? Because if we're clear on who we're for, so who is your particular audience? Whether you're a soloist or an ensemble, whether you're a community group or a professional group. If you know who the people are that you're trying to build relationships with, then the, the issue of, you know, how, how is this monetised or, you know, how do I create something of value for those people within the limitations of COVID, that question is much easier. Whereas if you're just saying, well, we're just putting on a concert and hoping someone will come, and if this was like the approach before, then it's, that's when you have, you might feel pressured to do this free online content because we don't really know who we're doing it for, we just feel like we have to put something out there. And for us to also think about why we're doing it. So I think a lot of people are putting out this free content because they feel like they have to do something. They were doing something before and they have to be seen to be doing something now. And that's maybe the quick response, the knee-jerk response. But I think we need to take a moment to pause and think about, why, why would we put this content out there in the first place? Particularly this sort of, as Ben mentioned, this archival kind of recycled content. Like what, how is that serving anyone? Particularly if that was just incidentally recorded at a concert and it wasn't kind of professionally produced with the intent of being used in a digital space, then you're actually not making yourself look good and you're not giving those people a real, genuine valuable experience of connection. Whereas if we can think about the ways that, say, Inventi have been actually connecting with people live, whether that's with an instrument or whether that's even just calling out the people on your mailing list and saying, "Hi, how are you going?" If we can maintain and continue to build those relationships and those connections, then we're going to have people in our audience, in our who, that are going to be willing to pay for our content. And I think it's also about us, in that question of who is it for, thinking about who are we as an organisation? And how are we uniquely us, as opposed to how are we the same as all the other orchestras? Or all the other choirs, or all the other chamber ensembles? So this is an opportunity for everyone to find a point of differentiation and that is something that is therefore going to be scarce and that people are going to be willing to pay for.
The other thing that I've seen a lot of are those mosaic videos. Hands up if you've seen plenty of those. Think, what else could we be doing with our resources? Like that's, it's a huge investment of the time of the performers and the presenters. It's a huge investment of the time of the person who has to put that video together. Well, what else might we do instead of that in a market, you know, you know, Facebook and drowning in mosaic videos? Well, instead, what if we pulled down our audience data? And we say there's 50 people in our choir or 50 people in our orchestra? And what if we pulled down our ticketing data from the last two years and identified our most, our biggest fans? And we said, "Okay, these 25 people have come to everything we've done in the last two years." And we sent them an email and said, "We would love to do a little 15-minute sing just for you", to say like, "Hi Grace, this is Susan from BYSO. I know you've come to every concert in the last two years. Thank you so much for making this possible, for sharing music with us. We would love to give back to you and we'd love to, I'd love to sing for you for 15 minutes. Let me know, we'll organise a Zoom call." And if everybody in the orchestra or choir did that, imagine that, what that would do for your patrons? If they had a one-on-one 15-minute chat call and a little song from Grace versus a mosaic video. So this doing stuff that's kind of spray and pray instead of actually, who was in our inner circle? Who's in the tent already as a supporter of our community? And how could we use our resources and this time right now to make a true connection and serve them? So feel free to make a mosaic video, but maybe think about what else could we be doing with those resources to make an impact? I'm just seeing some great questions coming through on our. Google document there. One good one coming through from Steve Hardy. Does anybody have anything that just, yes, spray and pray. Thanks Natasha. It's a favourite one of mine. It's hard to measure. If you use the analogy of like the hose, how do you, how do you measure like what got wet versus a targeted approach of, because if you were to serve your audience, you could then, when you do get back online, do get back performing for fee either online or in person, Grace is going to be your number one fan because she got a, you know, a phone call or a Zoom call with like an individual personalized, meaningful connection. How do we reconcile the concept of let's get through this when none of us can get through? I guess, Ingrid, you're a leader of a couple of, in a couple of different ways. Do you want to maybe jump in on that one of how we might reframe the getting through?
Susan, you missed the last part of the question there.
Sorry, Steve, my internet's going a bit dodgy. Do you want to read it? Do you want to share it with us?
Yeah, what I've written is, yeah, how does one reconcile the concept of let's just get through this? When none of us have really got any idea what the world's going to look like on the other side and what's going to be possible? But yeah, when we have got through this. And I guess what I'm talking about there is with the whole, the whole idea that, yeah, the number of people we can have in a room together, the number of people we can have on the stage together. Yeah, and all that sort of stuff. Yeah, because we just don't know.
Yeah, yeah. Maybe just before we go to Ingrid, we have Natasha Lin on the line, who's a music therapist and a really a well-trained person in psychological wellbeing. Tash, have you got any tips for us on how we, how we can be in this space where there's so much uncertainty?
I've actually been thinking about this a lot, especially with my students. A lot of my students, half of them are young children, including teenagers, the other half are adults. And everyone's going through a similar sense of uncertainty. And a lot of them respond to that differently. Some are excited and I have conversations about that with them. Like, oh, you know, what's exciting? The vocabulary they use, it's like curious, adventurous, it's something different. And I've actually taken on board on what they have shared with me. And it's interesting how infectious that can be as well. Because within the family unit, if you have one child who's like, hey mum and dad, now we can do this together. Mum and dad are always here. That's great. I hardly can spend time with them. And I've been thinking about, okay, yeah, I can't perform anymore. However, I can still teach and maybe spread my love, joy of what music is from a more philosophical point of view, regardless of barriers and boundaries, which is something I've been trying to practise pre-pandemic time. The idea that music can bridge divides. And this is like a case in point. How can I bridge my own divide, my own conflict? Yeah, I don't even know what's going to be like, what's it going to be like in terms of even playing with other people? However, maybe this is a good time for me to think about strengthening this relationship I have with the people I have around me, musician or not. So it's about just really tapping into my own inner reflection. And being okay to show vulnerability. Like, I have days where I just ask a student, hey, how are you doing? Yeah, not so good. Yeah, I'm not doing so great either. You know, I can't finish my pans anymore. But, you know, it's, it's just something different. And I've been practising a lot in trying to see things differently. And the media doesn't really help me sometimes. So I'm really, I'm trying to practise more self-care. Be more mindful about what type of mentality I choose to have to respond to a certain thing even. Still discovering, Susan.
Thank you, Tash. Your care and your expertise for your students is really, it's a gift to them. So thank you for the vulnerability that you are choosing to share with them. I mean, I had a conversation with an incredibly strong, well, it was a text conversation with an incredibly strong woman today, where we were both just sharing that both of us had pretty much been on the floor. She hit rock bottom over the last couple of days. And for me, it was one and a half weeks ago where I just, I just cried for three days. It's, yeah, it's where we are right now. And I think leaning in on those who you care for you is a good, is a good way to go forward. And maybe, Ingrid, do you want to jump in on the process versus outcome question? Because that might maybe address some of what Steve's getting to.
Yeah, I think Grace just wanted to jump in before I go.
Just following off the back of Natasha. Thanks so much for that. My teacher's been really wonderful with his students. I'm with Stephen. And he's really good at getting us to reframe what we can learn in this situation that's different. And so like at the start of online lessons and things, when everything immediately went online, he said, well, a different way of looking at this is now that we're online, you know, we have more of an opportunity in lessons to do a lot of very slow, very detailed, very one phrase at a time. And pulling apart that where normally we might be more focused on the larger picture and the aesthetic of a piece or all and things like that, which has been really great. And even the response to ensembles and everyone for chamber music was all ready to go. And I had a really awesome group. We were all going to do Monteverdi together. And then the day before semester goes back, we get told, oh, we had rooms booked for you, but now we can't do that anymore. But it's been interesting to reframe the process and the way that we can learn. And we're able to do a lot more pre-planning before we meet together. So a lot more attention to musical details and a lot more making sure your part is really, really solid. Because the intensive, the rehearsals will be much more intensive than normal. If we can get together in week seven, week eight also. And also, a lot of the students who have had to do, I did my graduating recital last semester. Working with accompanists when you're really not in the same room together, when they have to pre-record everything. And because I did a lot of late 19th century work last semester, it was a matter of circling an individual note and saying, this note I always do a fraction later than this one and indicating the kind of rebuttal and things. And so it's been really helpful for me and also my peers to reframe the way that we're learning to go, well, what can we do that we don't normally get to do? And I found I'm a lot more musically articulate about exactly what I want in a different situation because I've been forced to think this way.
I think jumping off the back of what you just said, Grace, obviously what your teacher has done a great job of is looking through the lens of opportunity. And what are the opportunities that this space presents to us that we might never have considered before? Like, I know all the people who are in an ensemble or conduct an ensemble probably had never considered doing an online rehearsal before March this year. And whilst there are lots of things that we can't do in a Zoom call like this, there are also lots of things that we can do. And what we all need to do, and this is coming back to your question, Steve, two things come to mind. One is being in the moment, as hard as that is, and accepting the moment as it is right now that we don't know. We don't know what is going to happen. We've already had our hopes dashed once here in Melbourne. And banking on anything in a way is probably not going to help us. And that doesn't mean that we can't still be optimistic in the way that Ben talked about. That we can do what we can in the place that we are right now in this moment and do the best that we can with that. And I think that moving forward, what we're going to see for quite a while, like I don't even know, maybe two, two or three years is the only thing that's going to be certain is uncertainty.
This is kind of the point, this is kind of the point that I was wanting to get at because I see a lot of, and this isn't just a music thing. I see a lot of people talking about, oh, this is right 2020, we'll often we'll start again next year. And the fact is objectively speaking, there's no reason to believe that that is going to be at all realistic. And I just worry that a lot of people who are actually setting themselves up for a fairly diabolical psychological letdown when we, when we reach 2021 and they realise, oh shit, things really aren't, you know, what I thought, what I was hoping they were going to be.
And I think we're going to get in trouble if we, if we put too much energy into predicting one or the other. You know, if we, if we, if we have a really optimistic outlook, we're probably going to get disappointed. And if we have a really pessimistic outlook, that's not going to feel very good either. So we have to kind of work within the bounds of what.
I'm not trying to sound pessimistic, but yeah, I'm strongly realistic.
But I think what that means for the people that we interact with, whether it's the people in ensembles that we lead for the people who are conductors on the call or the ensembles that you lead as an administrator or the groups that you're involved with or the students that you teach. What we can model right now is how to be flexible and honest and vulnerable, to use Natasha's word, amidst this uncertainty. Because everyone is going through this together. And if we can model going through that with grace and humility and doing our best and knowing that probably it's going to suck and things are going to go wrong, then as people, forget musicians, like as people, that is like the best thing that we can give other people right now. And that thinking as people rather than as musicians, I think is going to help us work out what is the the what and the how of what we're going to do as musicians in this time of uncertainty. If we can kind of get to this higher level of why we do what we do. Like, what are we trying to achieve as opposed to what event or thing am I trying to do? If we can get to the bigger question of mission and purpose and vision, then it's very easy to re-engineer the how we do it and the what we do within the constraints that we have right now. So, you know, everyone who's here on this call had an experience with music that made you want to come back for more. And we've probably all had those experiences, both as a performer and as a listener. And one thing that we can do right now, even though we can't play in our big ensembles, is we can share that with people. And that might be as simple as, you know, sending someone a recording of a piece and saying, or getting your ensemble together for an online group and everyone sharing, this is a piece of music that has really given me solace during this time. Or this is a piece of music that I listen to when I'm really pissed off about the world and I am right now. That we just need to get above the nitty gritty of concerts and sheet music and just the nuts and bolts and think about at a high, high level, what is it that we're about? Because that's how we're going to solve the problem of how do we, what do we do in this period of uncertainty and we don't know how long it's going to last for.
Absolutely. And that actually leads a little bit onto Rob's post a question asking about discounts, approaching venues for discounts. For example, sharing the booking with another ensemble. But I think any of us thinking about a concert right now is a bit of, it's dangerous territory. And so I think maybe what would, what would be a different way of approaching that is, is maybe, I see lots and lots of ensembles spending an enormous amount of psychological, emotional, physical energy and resources putting on concerts. And there's often the same or less people in the audience than there are in the ensemble. Right? So there's lots of reasons why that that happens, which we can dig into if we want to. But what about if you said to your ensemble, your vocalist, your performers, does disperforming to an audience really matter to you? And very non-judgmentally, does it actually matter? Because what they might say is yes, in which case we can go down a discussion around what is the experience they're having? That is, what is missing in the experience they're having that they're not so invested that they're just dragging people along? Because they're so kind of excited about what you're doing. Or if they say to you, actually, no, we really just love coming together on a Thursday night and having a, like singing and being excellent and having a biscuit. And that's actually what, that's actually the value for us. So then why on earth are we investing all of these resources in putting on concerts for 40 or 50 people? Exhausting the committee? When what your people, what your musicians really want is just to come together and commune through music. So I would love to see this as an opportunity for you to go to your ensemble and say, where is the value in music making in this organisation for you? Because if it's coming together and playing together, yes, 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 let's just do that. And we're just a group, we're a group and we rehearse together every Thursday. And every eight weeks, we have an open rehearsal for friends and family and that's our performance. Zero cost. Bring a bottle of wine. Your family get to sit there or bring a gin and tonic or a cup of tea and participate in the music making or even have them come in and sit in the ensemble if we're not still socially distanced. So if the people, if the music makers in your organisation just want to make music together, ditch the concerts. Ditch them. It's burning people out. Like, the world is not going to be any less better a place to live in if we have three less choir or orchestra concerts a year, really. Just let it go. But if they say to you, actually, we really do want to perform, performing is really important to us. Then as an organisation, you need to come together and say, well, what is happening in the experience that we are creating? That they are not so invested and so passionate about the performance that they're just evangelical about what's going on. Like, so that's another question that we can then, as the organisers, as the conductors, as the programmers, as the artistic planners, as the committee, ask what is going on in this experience that it's not, that they're not so super invested together. So I think that's something we could be thinking about. If the idea of spending a lot of energy planning a concert seems a bit challenging right now, is just say to your ensemble, we're going to think about actually, are concerts necessary? Are they valuable to us and our identity as a music making organisation? Because they might not be. We've, you know, we forget kind of all of us, we're the kids who are mad about music at school, right? And then many of us went and studied music at university. And then many of us work in music and we're like fangirls, fanboys for music. But for, and but for many others, what matters for them is just sitting next to John who plays the tuba and playing Pirates of the Caribbean. And that's the highlight of their life, which is awesome. So maybe the value in the music making, we're putting our professional level concert, you know, we're putting our values onto the ensemble instead of asking the ensemble what they need. Enough of a rant from me about that. Ingrid, do you want to go with Rob's question?
Yeah, so Rob's question was about post-COVID societal interruptions. What do we think of approaching performance venues for fair discounts such as arranging double bill type bookings with another ensemble? Like one group performing in the afternoon and another at night, but both receiving financial reductions from the venue when the time is right? Yeah, this is something that Susan and I have been talking about a lot in all sorts of different ways is, you know, this is an opportunity for us to rethink basically everything that we do and how we do it. Because why wouldn't we take this opportunity? And one of the things that we could rethink is, you know, what are our costs? For example, a concert venue and are there ways that we can pool our resources? So whether that's a concert venue or maybe it's. pool our resources? So whether that's a concert venue or maybe it's um finding a rehearsal space that is a type of building that does not get used at night, like a childcare centre. Um, and maybe that could be the rehearsal venue or um you know, condensing um like the administration task that many of our ensembles have and everyone chipping in to getting one person that does, you know, all the social media for the community orchestras or all the design work or all the whatever. Um, that there's so many opportunities for us to come together rather than feel like we have to compete. Uh, so I think that, that's a great idea, Rob. And if other people have got others, um David, do you want to jump in? You just said you want to jump in.
Yeah, I didn't want to interrupt. Um, I just wanted to share very, very quickly um some of the experiences here as we, as we drop down. There's two things I just wanted to very quickly say. Um, it, leading on from the other comments is that um it, it was very useful for us to define a staff, professional staff to define the levels. So the New Zealand implemented the level system very quickly and so we went to level four way back in March. But as we dropped down the levels four, three, two, one, um, uh, the staff and the students, we defined what those levels meant for us. So that if we went back up a level or back down a level, we knew what that meant, how that interpreted for us. So we had our our everyday life stuff to deal with and, you know, getting through several bottles of gin a week um to, to survive at home. Uh, but we also had our musical professional life levels as well. So um what happened here is that as we dropped down the levels, some of the uh, places like art galleries, uh, Take Papa, the National Museum, uh, the, the zoos and things started doing things called soft openings. And what they were doing is experimenting with socially different things. And a lot of our students um, were invited to assist in that because a lot of venues needed people to come back as well. So people, there was a lot of anxiety around people coming back, going out in the open. So uh, we, it worked both ways. So I would love to encourage you to um, and to approach people in a sort of soft opening way. And um they, you know. But the pain and the grief that you, you're describing and um and I were all terrified here in New Zealand, of course, of it happening again. But I just wanted to say that maybe um, as you've alluded to there, it's not just the musicians that need support and help. Businesses will need a lot of cohesion and music can heal. And I'm so delighted to hear your comments from the music, our music therapists, because that has really um worked wonders here to bring businesses back into light and to soft openness was, was the words that we used here. So that's all I really wanted to say. Thank you.
David, I had just got a question about how did the soft openings work and were the students um, performing or how were they involved?
So they would go into um social distant performances and they would, it would often just be a pianist and singer or pianist and instrumentalist. Um, and the, initially the soft openings were done in a, you know, um bubbles, they use the bubble terminology here a lot. Um, if you, you weren't allowed to break, break your bubble. Um, and so you could go to an event uh as long as you're in your bubble. Um, and then that was sort of level three and then level two dropped down through. And so we used, uh, we used the levels of the government. And as I said, we all had a level, what that meant for ourselves. So we were prepared to shift up and down. Um, things like uh mask wearing was uh, you know, people kind of just didn't mess around, we just got on with it sort of thing and wore masks. And then um, there was a lot of uncertainty at the time in the first wave of uh voice vapors. So the singing choral stuff and singing was curtailed and even brass, uh, all our rooms at work were masked up with uh social media distancing. We didn't have moved all the brass and voice stuff into other areas, bigger spaces, et cetera, same. And but we did it in a very clinical way in a sort of um, level three, we're going to do this, level four, we're going to do this, level two, we're going to do this. Uh, and it really helps. Uh, my husband is a, a logistics planner for me, he, he just expand with the United Nations and one of the things he did for the school was actually, so you just need a series of, uh, uh, um, series of operational levels. And we helped bring a lot of clarity to your personal life and also your professional life. And um, it helped a great deal of us get through so that we were prepared to go up and down and actually remove the emotional fear and anxiety where you can and rely on this very clear set of processes and actually just take it back to, you know, clear points. Um, so yes, uh, social distancing was good, mask wearing was highly successful. Um, we also, we also encouraged our students not to throw everything on, on the, on the digital platform. But also to, with the support, the, the networks, invite people. So for example, we have usual, in the city of Wellington, there's a lunch hour series. So we pre-recorded the lunch hour series and then broadcast it and people attended online um sort of things. So we, we, we um yeah, exactly, Melissa, eh, exactly, Melissa. Yeah, we used, we were creative and rethought basically how we could re-engage um, the um audiences that were already there in other ways that you've alluded to. So I'll shut up now.
Not at all. Um, there's just, just in this care and recovery, there's a document, I'm just going to um share screen and I'll put it in the chat for you. Um, I know that Tash is really interested in music as a, as a building uh for peace and reconciliation, and that's been a big interest of hers. But this um absolutely phenomenal doc, piece, um, can you see my screen there? Could you just give me a thumbs up if you can see my screen? So it's talking about engaging at the top, engaging arts audiences in a time of trauma. And it's about trauma-informed care as applied to the recovery of art, of the profession of artists and the arts organisations. And it's talking about safety, trust, you can read safety, trustworthy and transparency, peer support, collaboration, empowerment, cultural, historical, gender issues. And each of those have a really detailed application for how we would um, how we would go about applying that to our planning for our organisations to reopen and for either as a, either if you're a freelancer, a small organisation or a large organisation. I just, I read that and it just blew me away in terms of classical music, it's been for itself, it's been for us. And it's time for it to be for others, meaningfully for others. And so coming, understanding that um, everybody in the world is experiencing trauma at some point. And how do we use this framework of trauma-informed care around the planning for the work that we're going to do for others in the coming months and the coming years? So um, I hope that might be a little bit of interesting reading for you. I found it really, really fascinating. Um, do we have any, oh, we had a um question over here from Alison about, again, about shared resources and would community ensembles be open to the idea of sharing, sharing someone for their admin work? It's a really great question, Alison. Um, having been on lots of committees and being queen president of the orchestra right now, it's a cash issue. They're so, you know, they're so tight on cash, but maybe that's a mindset, maybe cash, maybe money's not the problem, maybe we need to rethink that. So maybe that would be something you could, if that was a service that you would think of offering, if you could, you could put a case study together of five, you know, um, a consortium of five choral ensembles or five um orchestras and what, what the duties are, what are the admin duties and how a shared services model might work for that? Is there anyone um of, of shared services or shared expenses? I can't, I can't. So many of you. Great, thanks Karen.
I, um, there was a company called Stockdale that used to do all the admin for all the big arts orgs, such as the Kedai and the Orfs and a lot of the choirs. But they just went under. So there's a big hole in the market now for um for somebody that wants to take over that administration of arts orgs.
There's also another bum, I guess, business, I suppose, admin for the arts, which is actually Emily Ditman, who's actually a student from, from Blackburn. Now she was just getting this off the ground towards the end of last year. So I really don't know what's happened um, in, 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 in response to this year. I know that I was talking to her about a project that I had in mind. And she was really, and she was like forced, she, she couldn't take me on. But I imagine or something she was doing must have fallen over. So I don't know where that, where that one is now. But that year I would do this, she was going to do much the same sort of work that the Glenners used to do with Stockdale.
I, I find having been on a number of orchestra, community orchestra committees and also working with them while not formally on the committee, is that musicians often are not very good organisers, unfortunately. And the mistakes that get made and they don't necessarily want to learn from their mistakes. It's, that's how we do it. That's how we've always done it. And I just see that the same mistakes have been made over and over at all, at lots of different ensembles. And nobody wants to change. And I find that frustrating from an, from an organising point of view. And I'm sorry, but that's how I earn my income is organising things. Um, so I just, I, I haven't worked out in my mind how to help an ensemble management learn from their mistake and, and see how it can be improved. Suggestions please.
Uh, I, I don't know if that ball of string is something we could unwind very easily. Um, but it's, it's a, it's a good thing to ponder on. Thank, um, thanks Alison. And also some good suggestions in there about um, for organisations that might not have the financial capacity is tapping into students who are training in arts management. Who might be interested in undertaking an internship through their course. Um, I think.
Yeah. Hey, everybody. Um, one of the mini hats that I wear is um working with a boat of Victoria. Um, and that's a completely volunteer community organisation um that, that works in arts education. One of the interesting things is that we, we find that the manpower side of things, despite the fact that we're all there and wanting to give back the community, the hardest thing is that we all work full time as well. So it's a matter of finding people who have space um, and, and passion to be able to uh step up and be reliable. Because um these volunteer sort of positions when life takes over, it's often not near priorities, this, this stuff. Uh, um, but that can be quite challenging. And that's one of the things that we've found is that the enthusiasm bounces through the door um, and quickly dissipates and, and leaves the with is actually more issues because um couldn't um follow through with them, which means that somebody else has to, to come through and pick up the pieces. One of the things we have had success though is um partnering with like-minded um business um who don't offer us um fiscal support, but offer us administration support. Um, and that has been a game changer for us because everybody's really happy to come to meetings. Because it means, no one's going to get lumped with the crappy jobs because there's somebody else taking care of that. Um, so it just means that the, the whole team is happy and knowing that there is support there um, for, for us to take care of those things that, that are really high priority and really, really important, but not exciting. Um, and of course, we're a bunch of musos who love dealing with the exciting uh, and not so much with the, uh, the boring. Um, so I think if you're looking at a community ensemble, a lot of the times there's people who are engaged um in, in business and different um kind of organisations that may not directly be able to take that on for you, but might have some people who have um, you know, a, a graphic designer that's got a little bit of space in their um time, or somebody with some video editing skills that'd be happy to to jump in and do a favour for a good cause. So I think maybe we need to be better at actually asking for that help than, than what we are and not expect it to come to us. Um, but be really particular about what we need help with and, and go out and, and, and seek that.
You're, you're absolutely right, James. And also off the back of Catherine's comment is have you polled the people in your ensemble to ask what skills they have beyond their voice or their instrument? Maybe you've got someone in the group who's a, who's a qualified accountant. Maybe you've got someone whose day job is in, they work for Boston Consulting Group. Or maybe they have a dad who's a retired tax advisor who'd be happy to be your bookkeeper. So maybe, you know, do, doing an audit of all of the resources, the fit gap of the resources and the requirements your organisation has and putting a call out through your newsletter or through your player space for that particular skill to come and be on the, on the um adjunct committee. They don't necessarily need to take on a committee position, but maybe they could assist in some other way. So how are you, how are you uh creating a different kind of relationship with your community and digging into the other? Uh, the other, other than coming to your concert, they might love to give you an hour a week to do your audit, your financial audit. Wouldn't that be great? Um, like I know there's a lady who in, in Bayside Chamber Orchestra, one of the cello players, is head of marketing for ANZ Bank. And she's a, a national, nationally acknowledged marketer, yet I don't think that organisation is tapping into her expertise in any way. So are we, uh, are we just looking at people for the, for the value they're bringing us on their instrument or their voice when we could be looking further? And, and their friends and family who, who want to be connected as well. Um, Grace, I think you wanted to.
Um, James, um, thanks for that. I'd really love to hear more about your experience with the student interns. Um, if not now, then at a later day. Um, I worked for Susan um a couple of years ago now and um Brian was involved in this as well with Inventi. Um, and we were able to set up with the con um through, through Ignite Lab, um, a series of, a series of internships with students where a lot of the um students at the Clyde to us at Ignite Lab to undertake these internships. And they were all forty hours of work and they all got a thousand dollars um funded from the you need to go and then complete that work. So the ensemble um was at no, the ensemble and um the applications were then approved, approved by us or accepted or rejected. And it was quite competitive. There were students that we had to turn away. Um, and um I know that working on the back end of that project, um, learnt a lot about what made a successful experience for the students and um what pre-planning was necessary um for both the student and the organisation to get as much out of that exchange as possible. Um, and um if you're interested in more with, oh, I think I'm, is my internet still around? Hello? Oh, good, cool. Everyone just froze for a bit. So it's probably me. Um, but yeah. I'd um, I'd be more than happy to talk later about um what worked and what didn't work, because there are students that are definitely keen um to be doing that administrative work. Um, I know that myself and some of my peers are on the, on the rounds at the moment, doing the admin applications. And there are a lot of very good people um who I'm sure have a lot to contribute.
Yes. And the answer to this is if the con pulled their finger out and in, started a Bachelor of Music in Classical Music Leadership and Innovation. And part of that coursework was a two-year embedding with a community music ensemble, right? That would fix that problem. But, you know, if only I was queen of the world and I could make that happen. Um, we've probably just got uh time for sort of one more question before we go to Sarah Coro. Does anybody, if you can just, um, I can't sort of see you all in the chat. So if you've got a question or you wanted to round us off with anything, can you just type your name in the chat so I can pass to you? Last, last, last chance.
Okay, so I'm just going to share an idea that I had last night that, and I couldn't sleep for about three hours. Um, that might be a way that everyone in this room could instantly at basically no cost um, do something right now while you are in lockdown about music. do something right now while you are in lockdown about music for the people around you beyond the joyous performance that Sarah is going to give us. What if you did with your ensemble or with your students that you just asked everyone to get a blank piece of paper and to write on that piece of paper, "My name is Ingrid. I play the French horn and conduct an orchestra. The piece of music that really means a lot to me is..." And just tape it on your fence. Or tape it on the electric pole down the street. Or if you're really fancy, you could jump online and make yourself a QR code of the YouTube link so that someone could walk past that on their walk within their five kilometre radius and take a photo and go, "Oh, yep." And then they might be listening to Mala that they've never heard of before. Super simple, super easy. A primary school kid can do it. Yeah, a community ensemble could do it. And imagine if we music bombed Melbourne. Like we can all do this right now and make music visible.
Yes, let's do that because it's too cold for us to sit on the footpath and play our French horns, which we were doing quite often. Yeah, so can we just, Tash is going to share one last idea with us. But while she's sharing that, can you share in the chat box, very meta teaching tool here? Please, what was the most valuable thing you heard or learned or came across yourself? And to what action are you going to take as a result of the time we spent together today? So can you be typing that while we're hearing from Tash?
As part of an initiative to try and keep the motivation and validation for my students, I teamed up with a colleague of mine who is background in youth leadership and holistic counselling to co-host with me a Zoom concert festival for my students. And because of the amount of people, I decided to keep it more intimate. So grouping them in groups of five, so there's around seven. And we together came up with the idea of the Seven Ancient Wonders of the World. And I've grouped them into teams that's named after each of these wonders. It's not only given these kids and adults as well a feeling of recognition for their hard work because they've just been practising at home in isolation. And in fact, a lot of them have improved a lot because they have nothing else to do. So they just keep playing more music. But also, yeah, fostering this sense of community. And it's actually opened up a different frame of mind of approaching the idea of a concert. Really, what is the concert? It's just an excuse to get together. And the pandemic has really definitely amplified the need for this get-together. So in fact, I've had all my students feeling really excited. Even the really ancient ones, the ones usually who has performing anxiety, they really are keen just to hop on, meet other friendly places and just see what happens. Yeah, that's my two cents.
Thanks, Tash. That's awesome. Well, noodles has made an appearance and that means it's time to put the tables up on the chairs. And we're absolutely very, very honoured to be joined by Sarah Coro. So Sarah, do you please play us out? There could be no better way to conclude our time together for energy. If you would like to do this again, drop me a message and let me know. You can find me here. I'm very happy to facilitate, you know, once a month to get together and we could pick a point that we want to focus our discussion around. But again, thank you so much to Sarah. That was really beautiful. So I hope wherever you are, that you're making music tomorrow with people that you care about. Stay well and we'll be in touch soon, everybody. Thank you so much. And thank you, Ingrid, too.